Hello, my name is Michelle Laringle. I am with the Lewis County Planning Department, and I want to welcome you to the Planning Commission Public Meeting today. This meeting is taking place in person, streaming live via Zoom, and it is being recorded. For those joining us via Zoom, please remember to mute your phone or device when you are not speaking. If you forget to mute your phone or device, we will mute you. Tonight's meeting is a workshop on the Packwood SubArea Plan. A reminder, the Zoom chat feature is modified, so participants may report technical difficulties directly to myself, the clerk. No public comment or questions will be taken through the chat feature. We will start with roll call. Bob Russell. Jason Alves. Frank Corbin. Gretchen Fritz. Orbin Foster. And then Kathy Chesting.
My name is Bob Russell. My name is Bob Russell, and I'd like to call to order the May 23 meeting of the Lewis County Planning Commission. Since this is a small meeting and not too many people are attending, we'll not go through a bunch of introductions tonight. Prior to tonight, the commission received the agenda for today, and the agenda is displayed on the screen in front of the commissioners. I'd like to entertain a motion and a second from the Planning Commission to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Frank. Thank you, Jason. Is there any discussion on the agenda? If not, please vote verbally.
Aye.
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 Let's see, Frank. Corbin, I'm sorry, Corbin, did you vote too?
Yes, I did. Vote aye.
Thank you. Prior to tonight, the commission received the meeting notes from the May 9, May 9, 2023 meeting. Are there any corrections to the meeting notes? If not, I'd entertain a motion and a second to adopt.
Bob, you need to turn on your, sorry, they literally can't hear you in Zoom without your microphone on.
Thank you. Excuse me. Are there any corrections to the meeting notes from May 9? If not, I'd entertain a motion to adopt the minutes.
I move to adopt the minutes, as written.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? And if not, a verbal vote. Aye.
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 Thank you. Are there any members of the public that would like to provide comments? Please note that these are not, we're not taking public testimony on the Packwood SubArea Plan at this time. The next hearing on the SubArea Plan tentatively scheduled for September 12th, where the public may provide comments. Now is the time for comments on other items that you do not see on the agenda, but you would like to address. Anybody with a hand up out there, Michelle?
No.
Well, if there is nobody, then tonight's workshop is on the Packwood SubArea Plan, and I believe it says, "The purpose of this work session is for the staff to present information about the topic and the commission to ask questions. No public comments on the proposal will be taken during the workshop." I will now turn it over to staff.
Thank you so much, Mindy Brooks, Senior Long Range Planner, and we'll take a pause here and let Michelle get the presentation up and rolling. This is Michelle's first Planning Commission meeting, running at Command Central, so thank you, Michelle. We know it's very daunting, all that technology over there. Okay, great. So, the agenda this evening is going to be to, is to talk about a little bit of overview. So I'm going to start with a few more reminders for anybody who is joining us on Zoom, who may not be as familiar with the plan, so I'm going to do a little bit of overview and background. And then we're going to launch into the main topic for tonight. So the topic tonight are the properties surrounding the airport. So we'll talk specifically about those. I'm going to give you an update about the last couple of meetings. We've really just focused on those, the last couple of advisory committee meetings. We have, I saw that Teresa was on there. We'll see if anybody else jumps on. Teresa's one of our advisory committee members. I did invite them because they're not public, so if you have questions that you want to ask the advisory committee, you can ask them. You can treat them like staff at this juncture in this. So they're there. Just a reminder that you guys did receive your staff report back on April 12th, was that right? I think it was. It was a little while back there. We sent out a staff report that had notes and information about the airport, but I'll be going all over all of that, and all that information is online for the public. Next slide, please. So starting out with just a few reminders, Packwood SubArea Plan is a long-range vision goals and policies that will manage Packwood's growth and development over the next 20 years. Next slide. The Packwood SubArea Plan is being completed in two phases. We are in Phase 1, which is vision goals and policies. Phase 2, which comes after Phase 1, are new and updated development regulations that implement Phase 1. So until we get all the way through both phases, until we get through 1 and 2, there'll be no impact on development or subdivisions or anything like that out in Packwood. All that work needs to be completed first. Next slide. Phase 1 is anticipated to be adopted this fall. We're on schedule to adopt this fall. Phase 2 will start immediately after Phase 1 is over, and it will begin with public engagement, just like Phase 1 did. We do anticipate that to be adopted in summer 2025, so it will be adopted at the same time as all the other periodic comp plan updates will all come together, including Packwood. So again, just want to keep everybody, until that fall 2025, we're under existing regulations, so nothing's happening quickly. Next slide. The other big reminder is goals, policies, as well as those Phase 2 development regulations are only going to apply within the Packwood SubArea Plan boundary, so that's the black line on the map here. It does not include High Valley, Timberline, Goat Rock, some of the major areas where people live in around Packwood. Those people, of course, shop and eat and hang out and do all kinds of things in this area, so they have an interest, but any of the goals, policies, and future regulations will not impact them directly on their property. Next slide. I'm not going to read all these. Okay, to you. There's a lot. But I put it here because we put the PDF online, right? So there's an online version that everybody's access to, so we can go back and review to it. But the bottom line is, the plan is about creating affordable housing, providing services for people who live in Packwood, including families and people who are aging in place, encouraging job growth, not just tourism-based, but supportive jobs like electricians and plumbers and mechanics and pharmacy, et cetera, and preventing sprawl. We want to keep outlying areas rural and making sure the town's development, like restaurants and stores, actually just stay in town where they belong. Next slide. This is a big one. I've said it every time. I'm just going to keep on saying it. SubArea Plan does not drive growth, right? Growth is happening. It's been happening in Packwood. Infrastructure drives growth. Sewer will drive growth. The plan itself does not drive growth. The plan is about managing the growth, right, and guiding where it goes and how it happens. Next slide. Development isn't going to stop if we don't adopt the plan, so I'd like to keep reminding this, people. Development will continue even if we do not adopt a plan. It'll continue as it's been going. However, there's just not going to be a plan to guide it, right? So without a plan, most of the housing that has been built and will be built will be single-family residential, which is the least affordable housing option of the housing. And while some existing single-family homes are long-term rentals, it is unlikely that any of the new homes would be long-term rental. It's likely that most of them will be short-term rental or vacation homes for people themselves, right? So it won't help the affordable housing issues we have in Packwood to not adopt the plan. I'm not saying this like as a scare tactic. This isn't something that I'm trying to make people afraid about. It's just that we hear people say, "We don't want growth. We don't want any more tourism." We're not going to stop that. That's already happening. It's going to keep on happening. The plan is trying to manage it, so I just want to keep that in everybody's forefront. It's about managing the growth, making sure it goes where it's supposed to go. It doesn't sprawl out, and not adopting the plan isn't going to stop any of the growth that's happening. Next slide, please. Okay, 20-year vision statement. "In 20 years, Packwood is a vibrant, small town that embraces its history, encourages unique local businesses, provides a diversity of affordable housing options, supports existing and new residents, preserves the natural environment, encourages tourism, and promotes community events." That's super lofty. We know that, but that's what the community would hope that Packwood is in 2045. Next slide. I'm not going to walk through all the goals and policies. You guys have already had multiple presentations on all the goals and policies, and you can go back and look at the plan yourself. Just for anybody who's listening in, hard copies are available at the Packwood Library, or you can scan the code and get it online. All these topics are covered under the goals and policies. All of them were developed by the Community Advisory Committee. All of them focus really on people living in Packwood. The vast majority is about making sure that Packwood is a livable community for the people who are there full-time. Tourism has a big impact on Packwood because tourism is the primary economy, and tourism has consequences that we need to figure out how to address out in Packwood. So tourism is absolutely included in the plan. It's not like it's left out. But the goals and the policies are really more about people living and working in Packwood. They're not about tourism. And that tourism should be supportive of the community. It should be sustained and supportive, not the goal of the plan. Next slide, please. So a couple of reminders. We had a public hearing back on March 14th that was at the Packwood Community Hall, Cruiser's Pizza, woo-woo. You received 22 pieces of written testimony and 10 people provided oral testimony. Testimony was largely in support of the plan with a few requests for changes, so we had some specific requests that came in. On March 28th, at the continued hearing, you remanded the plan back to the advisory committee to address three topics that were brought up in testimony: land uses for properties surrounding the airport, the historic mill, land uses, and short-term rentals. Next slide. Just a quick reminder that the advisory committee is made up of 35 members of the Packwood community. You have received bios on each of them. Those bios are also in the public engagement plan. If people want to review that, that's buried in the documents, but they're in here. They met January through December, last year, for, every month, for two hours to draft this plan. I am really, really grateful for all their hard work, and they agreed to convene for these three more meetings, which was really awesome, because I told them, "Oh, you guys are done," and then, "No, you're not done." But they've come back. I just appreciate them so much. I can't say enough about how much I appreciate that community for putting in the hard work. It's fatiguing. We are hoping to be done on June 21st with our final discussion. We do have a hold for a July meeting, but we're right on schedule for them to be done on June 21st. And then we'll be coming back to you in August. We were doing some updates. We'll be back in August and September for finishing up the work. Next slide. So that's it for the reminders in the background and all that stuff. Any questions before we get into the meat of this? No questions? Everybody looks good? Okay, cool. Next slide. So just a reminder about where we were at and then where we're at now. So, Packwood Airport. Going into that March hearing, the advisory committee had proposed the commercial business district designation for the airport and all the large parcels, like the parcel to the south, the parcel to the east. That was the same designation applied to the mill site. At the hearing, you received testimony from a property owner that the commercial business zone, they would like something different. They were asking for zoning that allowed similar uses to what is allowed today under the small-town mixed-use. You remanded the topic back to the advisory committee. The advisory committee wanted to take a step back and not focus on that property, but focus on the properties around the airport, right? So they didn't just talk about that property. They took the land use approach, which is what you should do. We're not spot zoning, and looked at all of the, all those properties. Next slide. Okay, I'm going to start with some explanations. So, the big issue here is compatibility. What are compatible uses adjacent to an airport? And there are two issues when we talk about compatibility. The first one is safety. Literally, an airplane crashing on takeoff and landing. We would prefer that they not crash into someone's house, so putting houses in the takeoff and landing area, not that great. We don't want that to happen. It's a safety hazard. The other safety hazard is some uses, like industrial uses that produce a considerable amount of dust, actually are not safe for the airplanes taking off and landing. They create a visibility, so this is a safety issue. The other issue is complaints. Airports are noisy. They can, you know, they themselves can produce dust and other pollution. And even if you tell people, "Hey, you know what? You just moved in next to an airport." You know that, right? They will still complain. And there can become pressure, particularly on low-volume airports like Packwood, to stop working, to stop existing, because they have, Packwood has very little takeoffs and landings. Packwood Airport is critical infrastructure, right? It is where we staged to deal with the fire last year. It is a medevac landing pad. It is the first place that you can land an airplane coming this way over the cascades if you're going along that Highway 12 pass area. So even though it is super, super low volume in terms of just personal airplanes taking off and landing, it's a really important piece of infrastructure. So we do have a concern about future complaints and people putting pressure on that airport. Next slide. This is what we're required to do, and it's not really a requirement. The RCW say that through your comprehensive plan, which this is part of our comp plans, SubArea Plans are part of the comp plan, and the implementing development regulations, you need to discourage siting of incompatible uses around the airport. It's squishy language. Discourage uses. It doesn't say you can't have them. It doesn't specifically say what those are, incompatible uses are. We'll talk about the guidance in a minute, but that's, this is what we have to do. This is our RCWs that we have to deal with. Next slide. There is a guidebook. It's the Airport's Incompatible Land Uses Guidebook. Wash.Aviation puts it out. It helps us understand what they think that means, what that RCW means. It boils down to discourage new residential near the airport, discourage industrial uses that would cause a safety hazard, and allow commercial uses, because commercial uses are largely compatible with airports. That's kind of what the whole thing boils down to in a nutshell. But we're going to talk about them a little bit more specifically, so let's move on to the next slide. Okay. This map was in the staff report that we sent to you guys. I know it's small. I can get you big copies if you want to see big copies. But this is about where everything applies, and I'm going to kind of walk through it. I know there's a lot here. So there's zones around all the airports. These are the aviation, Wash.Aviation produces these zones. And not only are they like going out from the airport, they also have a stadium effect, right? So they go up and out from the airport. So kind of think of it as a football stadium sitting over the top of the airport, when you think about it. But the height piece of it is already dealt with with our obstruction zones, and we're not changing those. So we don't have to worry about height. So keep, don't worry about like, what if it's too tall? We already have obstruction zones adopted, and we're keeping those. They meet the requirements for height. So all we're talking about is use. Zone 5 is the most restrictive. I have no idea why it's Zone 5 is the most, like, why wouldn't you start with Zone 1? Little weird, whatever, but Zone 5 is the most restrictive. It is the runway. It's 200 feet on either side of the center line of the runway, and then it's 500 feet off the front and the back. So this is the area where we really should discourage as much as we possibly can. This is where the most hazards are for people living there, being there. Really shouldn't allow new residential, but we kind of already have residential in there, and infill is, you are allowed to have similar development to what already exists, infill of similar development. Zone 1 is the purple areas that are right off the runways. And then there's Zone 3, which is the cone. So those are the three most important zones: the red zone, the purple zone, and the blue cone shape. The cone is, that is kind of the extent of how people are taking off and landing, right? The blue cone largely picks up orange, which is what your Zone 2, so your orange mostly falls inside of the blue cone shape. So again, we should be reducing the ability of new incompatible uses to be built in these spaces. But I'm going to keep saying this. Infill is okay. So if you have those incompatible uses already in that space, it isn't unreasonable to continue to let some of that occur that is similar to what's already there. But we should do our best to try and reduce new incompatibles, which really just means new residential should be reduced in those spaces. Out from there, you've got the four that goes further out. We're not as worried about that. And then six is anything goes, height restrictions only. So once you get out to that big stadium area, we're just worried about height. We don't care what else goes in there. I'm going to, I'm going to wait for a second, and because, well, the next slide just says questions, but let's leave it on this slide. Do you have any questions about this before we look at how the advisory committee decided to address this?
I assume there's going to be an overlay showing some property, specific properties in these zones, or?
You're about to see land use designations. Yeah. Gretchen, I see your hand up.
Oh, that was my question too. Just how many, what are we talking about? How many houses are in that currently and how much vacant land is in that?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yep, we'll cut, we'll get into kind of how they looked at addressing it. No questions, just about what these zones are, what the rules say, what we heard from aviation? Okay. All right. We'll actually go two slides, Michelle. So I'm going to talk about this at high level, and then we're going to zoom in. I have the zoom in of this map, so don't worry. I know it's small. What the Community Advisory Committee is recommending is a new zoning designation called the Airport District. It's in orange. I'm going to zoom in in a sec. Their recommendation is this. One-acre lots would be allowed here, but nothing smaller. New one-acre lots, let's be clear, within that orange area would be allowed here. Yes, those could have single-family residential, but not multifamily residential. Commercial and small-scale manufacturing would also be allowed there. We can control types of industry through development regulations, and it's not that all industry is bad in these areas. In fact, industry is largely compatible, as long as there's no visual issues. So that is what the recommendation is. Big, big structures, big lots, not multifamily in that orange area. This allows flexibility, so people can still develop in those spaces, but it reduces incompatible uses. Let's zoom into the next map. Next slide there. Get a little bit tighter. Okay. So again, the orange is that proposed airport district. The zones that are drawn on there are drawn by me. Those are not the official zones. They are not absolutely perfect. You'll notice I did not make a cone, because that was tough to do. So they're not cones. But it helps you kind of take, take in what's going on there. The approach that we took was any property that is fully within or touching Zone 5 or Zone 1, so that's the red and the purple, is part of the airport district. And then when you go outside of there, we tried to retain as much as possible the previous recommendations, which is mostly low-density. I have a comparison map coming too in a second. Gretchen asked a question, "What's in here? What is in this orange?" When you're looking at the northeast area, the vast majority of those properties are owned by the county and are not going to be developed anyway. They've been purchased. They're part of that runway takeoff. They're not developable. Until you get to the properties that are right along Combs Road there, and all of those are already developed with residential uses at max density. So there's not a, there's not a future development there, unless if we bumped them up to like a medium or high-density residential, which we had never proposed doing. We proposed them staying low. So that's what's happening to those north properties. Then if you come down, you have a few little properties, like we pick up the edge of the RV park. The RV park is a few different parcels. We pick up the edge of the RV park in this. That's fine. They can stay, maintain, whatever. They're vested. And then you hit the Huntington property, so that was the specific one that the request came in on. That site is currently in for subdivision at roughly 2 to 4-acre lots. This proposal means that those lots could go down to one-acre lots in the future, if the property owner wanted to, and develop each of those with a residential use. So we're still preserving some capacity for residential development there. The next property is owned by the county, and that is the thrift store and the Longmire Brewery Properties. So those are already county-owned properties. So overall, the orange doesn't actually affect many private properties at this time. It's pretty small. There are a couple other changes we made. I just want to stay here for a second, and then I'll talk about the other little changes we made related to the airport. But it's a lot to look at, so I just want you guys to take a minute to take it in and let me know if you have any questions.
There was a particular landowner. Where does his property fall in this?
Sure. That's the Huntington Road property, so it is right along the eastern boundary, excuse me, north of Tail Race. I could point it out easier. It's a triangle piece of property, and it's currently being subdivided into 2 to 4-acre lots. And it would have the ability to go then further to one-acre lots in the future if future property owners wish to do that.
For some reason, I was thinking that he was in an ST, whatever it is, U, 4 lots to the acre. And there was concern of that going away. Is that, I must have missed that, so you're saying?
It's going away. No, we're recommending to take away development capacity through this to be compatible with the airport. So STMU would allow, if you have really well-draining soils and you're in the water system, you can get your, your lots are like 12,900 square feet, so you can get three-ish per acre. And this recommendation removes that to one-acre lots to be compatible.
What was your comment on 2 to 4-acre lots?
That's his current subdivision that he has in. So he is currently subdividing that 13-acre piece of property into some 2 and 4-acre lots. He could be dividing that under STMU into 1,200 square foot lots right now. And he still has the ability to do that until 2025. And then it would go away with this.
That was my question, is how many acres, and you answered it. Thank you.
So the advisory committee felt like this was a really good compromise place, because it meets the intent, and we've discussed it with Wash.Aviation. They do feel this meets the intent of the guidance, which helps us with our grant assurances to make sure that airport can stay viable and functional. But it preserves the ability to do residential and commercial. We're not, we're not taking away the residential. Like, if we did the full guidance, we'd be like, "Nope, no more residential, just commercial, just manufacturing." The advisory committee really felt like that was un. The advisory committee really felt like that was unfair because that takes away a lot of property value to lose residential. At one acre lots residential, you can still do pretty expensive, honestly, housing and recoup that property value back to you. So they felt like this was a pretty reasonable place to land, pun totally intended.
So was there any discussion about the possibility of ADUs then? On this property?
So the recommendation is actually to not allow anything but a single family on, on this, in this areas because it's so narrow. So no ADUs, no, no duplexes, no multifamily. So I'm, I'll talk about where we expanded some capacity to make up for that just from a big land use standpoint. But felt like just single family to, to try and hit that guidance. But we're hoping, like I said, we're hoping that this preserves enough of the property value for those folks that are in there that were not, you know, tanking their property. We do this, so.
Have you asked that particular landowner? Are we going to hear from him?
I have shared this back and I have not received a comment back yet from him. So we'll see.
Thank you.
Yep. We're sharing this information as we go with everybody who is on our email list. So.
I guess the the reason I asked that is it shouldn't be coming as any surprise when we show up on the 14th. People ought to.
Better be paying attention. I would be if it were my property. Okay. So I'll talk a couple, about a couple of other things we changed and then we'll look at some comparison map. So.
Can I ask a quick question, Mindy?
Yes, please.
Can you remind me what the residential very low density number is just for reference?
Yep, that's exactly the same as the current STMU. So that's the 12,900, whatever.
So three houses per acre.
Just about, yeah.
Or three, okay. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. The advisory committee's overall recommendation for housing was not to drop below what STMU uses everywhere else. This airport is the only area where we'd be dropping below STMU's residential density. Everywhere else it's upping the density.
Okay.
So I don't have, I'm an, I don't have a pointer to share, so I'm just going to describe for Gretchen, who knows the streets. I'm looking at Main Street, between Main Street and Willamie, going west off of Highway 12. For you guys in the room, look at where the northern triangle on the east side, the right, the right side touches the red rectangle. So that intersection of those two. So you see that red area, that's Main Street, right where that's at, the red zones there. So we actually, you'll see in the other map, expanded the mixed use down Main and Willamie until it hits those restricted areas. Mixed use has the second highest density allowance in it. So it's a, it's a small commercial development footprint and allowing significant apartment. Not huge scale apartments. We're still probably talking six units per per structure, but allowing apartment complex. So we upped the density in that, along that space. Main Street to Willamie made a lot of sense because that's one of the main intersections, right? You, as you're going out there, you've got like the library and the historic hotel, and you go up one street, you got the post office. So expanding uses in there with commercial and residential made some sense. And then if you just go a little bit south of there, you got a whole bunch of the purple, the light purple, that's, that's residential medium. So we again increased that area in there and you'll see in the comparison map, we added a lot more residential medium in there to try and make up for the density lost by doing the airport district planning. Granted, a lot of that is the RV, but something that Preston just did some research and found out is that RV actually is an approved mobile home park. It's not being used that way, but those are in perpetuity. And so it could go back to being that, which actually is an excellent affordability approach. So keeping it at a medium residential is very compatible with that density of development. So not that they would do it, they certainly don't have to. They can stay RV park forever and ever, but they get the, they get that in perpetuity, which is pretty good. I can't remember how many lots, like 40, I think, mobile home lots. I'd have to go back and double check, but that's a really great news from an affordability standpoint.
So is that just, they're just being grandfathered in, Mindy, or is that the case for current, for all RV parks?
No, it's not for all RV parks. If a use was approved as a mobile home park, even though they're not using it as a mobile home park, they keep that, that allowance. So they would have had to be approved and, and that documentation does exist that, that this RV park was approved as a mobile home park. Let's look at a comparison map. Let's go to the next slide. It's going to get small again. And I'm going to caveat you that you're going to see changes at the mill site. We're not going to talk about those tonight. We're not 100% necessarily settled, but we're close, but let's not talk about those yet. So let's skip that one. And let's just focus on the airport and those changes. So you see the orange. And then you can see the purple that was pink in the middle there by the orange that I was just talking about. And then that finger of the mixed use that heads out there. So we're trying to just balance out removing some of the density as you're going into that flight path there and shifting it down along the edge where it's less incompatible. So this, this is the advisory committee's recommendation. We are done with the airport. We completed our conversation last week. So this is going to be the recommendation that they have coming forward. Any other questions? And again, we're going to talk about Mills site next time and probably some other properties next time too, but but the airport, the orange and the properties that literally abut it are settled. I'll leave it there. Keep looking.
So proposed versus future. Was the proposed what you brought last time and the futures this time?
Yeah. The proposed is what you guys saw going into the hearing. Yeah, I know. I was like, what should I call these things? That was the proposed. This will be the future proposed? I don't know. Weird terminology, but yes. The map on the left is what was in the plan that you guys had your public hearing on. And the map on the right is how it's evolving based on these additional conversations we're having with the advisory committee. I will say too, that we had unanimous agreement on, on this airport district and changing these, which is unique. We, we don't vote as an advisory committee. They're just advisory, but everybody was like, yeah.
Yeah. I will say that if I could, yeah, it seems super reasonable. It seems like it's very well thought out. I really liked that it seemed like they took into consideration the people that already owned property and gave them some options there and correct me if I'm wrong, but there's still quite a bit of time for this particular property owner to do what he originally intended. So
That's right.
Pretty likely that that will probably still go that direction.
I don't know. You know, we don't want to, we don't want to encourage people to jump the gun, but, but they will. And they do have until we adopt.
But he's got the option. And if he wants to play ball with everybody and ingratiate himself to that plan, I think it still leaves the option. So I just wanted to say I, I thought this was very well thought out. I, I liked that they considered that. So that seems very reasonable to me, unless I'm missing something.
Everybody feel pretty good about it? You're not making decisions tonight. I just wanted to make sure this, we're introducing and we made a lot of changes to the map. I'm going to send this back over to my contact with Wash dot aviation. He saw an early version of this and was really happy that we were making this move towards an airport district. So I'll send it back. Make sure that he doesn't see any fatal flaws with the revisions that we've made. Like I said, he saw an early version of this that isn't quite the same, but very, very similar. So hopefully we'll be good to go there. Okay. You can skip to two slides. We'll talk process.
And you said we were going to skip discussions on Mill site?
Yeah, we'll bring that back.
How about STI or STRs? We skipping that tonight?
Yeah, we haven't even had that conversation yet. Yeah.
That's right. That's June or something.
That's June. Yeah. We've been talking Mill. I think we're pretty good. We're pretty set on Mill. We've been working with the property owner too. And I mean, it's a huge site. It's almost 200 acres. So so it's pretty big. It's major for Packwood. But I'm going to save that till next time. We'll dig the same way we just dug. And, and we'll talk short term rentals next time. So I hand drew on this because we did the whole process and then we went back. We went through the whole thing and then we kicked ourselves back to beginning, which is totally fine. I I'm actually really glad we did that so that you guys, I want you guys to feel empowered to, if we don't have a deadline to say, mm-mm. We need more. You know, it's well within your guys' authority to say those kinds of things and make sure we get it right. As you can see with what we're doing now that you've asked us to do that, we're coming up with a better plan. So it's good. It's good. We're doing it. So we're back here at workshop. We're actually going to hang out in that first little do loop for a minute. I think we're going to do, you know, two or three workshops with you guys. So we can talk the details of the mill, talk the details of, of short term rental before we hit your hearing, which is tentatively scheduled for September 12th. So yep, that's what we're going to plan on doing. Just kind of hang out there. I would encourage you, if you have, like you get home and you think of a question about airport, shoot it over to me. If you want a bigger printout of the map to, you know, comb over, let me know. We want to get you guys what you, what you need at this point. So you feel comfortable before that hearing. And we have each of these workshops, I can bring back answers to questions. So you know, even if it's a question about something else in the plan that we're not specifically talking about, just don't hesitate to ask because we'll do that. And then next slide has the dates. So here we are tonight. Property in the airport. June 27th, we plan on talking about the historic mill and short term rentals. August 8th will be the final workshop where we can talk about anything else we need to related to this plan. And then September 12th will be the hearing out there at the community hall where we'll take testimony. We'll do all the same advertising for it. Don't be surprised to get a brand new person who wants you to do something different. Sometimes no matter how hard we try to make sure, everybody knows. Somebody doesn't know. Then they find out they're like, wait, what? So and then the last slide is just my information for anybody who needs to contact me. So that's it for tonight. Super fast. You guys got any other questions for me about Packwood?
Guess one that I didn't ask, who won't like that?
The Packwood, the airport?
Right now, just the airport thing. Is there? Is there somebody out there that we don't know about that you already know about that doesn't like it? Looks like it's well thought through.
I haven't. The property owner who testified on the Huntington property has not responded back with a yay or nay. So I don't really know where he's sitting with this proposal. And he is the largest private property owner who we've, that we've put that designation on. The other ones are, the large ones are county owned property. So we don't care. We do that to ourselves. I haven't heard from all of the people who were on that northern, the private northern edge that are along Combs Road. There's like five properties we're picking up. One of them is Mari Lurchan, who's on our advisory committee and she's cool with it. So we know she's down with that. But I haven't heard from those individual property owners. So I don't, I don't know how they feel about it. They're already developed properties and except for one, but they could still develop that one with a single family residential. I guess I would, if we want to try and reach out to them, we certainly can. If Gretchen knows those individual property owners, I'm happy to try and nail them down.
No, I don't, it doesn't sound like there's any landmine there. And based on what I'm hearing, the landowner gets lots of time to do something. And if he doesn't want to do that, he's got a better win anyway with one acre versus
None.
Two. So, yeah. Lots of good things. Okay. Are there any items from staff for the good of the order?
Are there? That's a good question.
Mindy will always respond, yes.
I know. One of these days I'll have nothing to tell you guys. I should, you're right. No, I don't have anything to say. Just a quick reminder. September 26th is our joint workshop with the Board of County Commissioners, regular time, right here in this room. But I'm really hoping that everybody will do their best to be here in this room. It will work much better in person than on Zoom. We're going to, it's going to be very interactive, kind of fun, I hope. So, and they'll be we're going to be in this room. Darn it. I would love to be in the other room. It is, but I can't wait to have our own space. That's it.
Anything else? Are there any items from the planning commissioners for the good of the order? Pick of the head there. Shake of the head there. Nothing here. I would, do I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, excuse me, excuse me. Planning Commissioners, Gretchen and Corbin Foster, are you guys good? Excuse me.
No, I would have said, you're good, Bob.
All right.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you so much. See y'all.